Okay, I'm gonna call this workshop to order. I appreciate everybody being here today. And in terms of roll call, everybody's here. All five council members are here. And we'll begin the council workshop. And not sure who's going to, what staff member's gonna introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor Houtre and fellow council members. Our presentation tonight will be made by Jim Eckert. I'm sure are familiar with Mr. Eckert with the walkroom of Draper.
Pierre Rosenblatt.
Rosenblatt. So without further ado, I'll let Mr.
Great, thank you very much. It's all yours, Jim.
Yeah, I was just waiting for them to bring it up. So, so thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. As you know, we're here to do a workshop on regulation of oversized vehicle parking. This is one that we actually brought to the City Council for a workshop two years ago, almost two years ago to the date, back in May of 2023. At that time, City Council had expressed some concerns and raised some issues. So we tried to address that and bring it back to the City Council. So just to kind of go through a little bit of an overview. The current regulations that we're proposing as part of this ordinance is authorized by California Vehicle Code 22507 subsection A, which authorizes local governments to actually impose restrictions on the stopping, parking, or standing of oversized vehicles within certain streets during certain hours of the day. That can be a complete regulation. It can be a limited regulation. But this is where we're getting the authority from. There we go. So first looking at what kind of actually constitutes an oversized vehicle. Oversized vehicles vary from one jurisdiction to another. But basically what we're talking about are those types of vehicles that are designed, that are either by their length, their width, or their height, create some type of hazard or other problem for the local jurisdictions. And you can see up here are just some of the typical sort of standards. Length for most jurisdictions is anywhere between 19 feet and 25 feet. Width anywhere from six to eight and height the same. But this really is different for each jurisdiction. And the state authorization allows us to do anything within these sort of dimensions that we're looking at. This is separate and apart from what would commonly be known as commercial vehicles or overweight vehicles. Those are done primarily based off of the weight of those vehicles and/or their designation as a commercial vehicle under the California Vehicle Code. This particular ordinance that we're proposing is not affecting commercial vehicles directly. That is, those commercial vehicles are already regulated under our code. We are focusing on vehicles that are oversized based off their weight. I'm sorry, based off their length, their height, or their width. Typical concerns that we generally see primarily are line of sight issues. So as a result of bigger vehicles, as you can see here, there's a vehicle that's actually pulling out of a private driveway right in front of the large semi-trailer. And as you can see, for vehicles that are traversing on this roadway that could create a line of sight, visibility issue for the vehicles that are pulling out of those driveways. And so that's obviously a primary concern for our government, for our, our community here. A second would be obstruction of traffic control devices. As you can see with this particular type of oversized vehicle, depending on where you are on the roadway, it may make it more difficult to see the stop sign. That could also have impacts upon other types of traffic control devices. And obviously, we want people to see those sorts of things earlier on, especially where we have unmarked crosswalks and things of that nature. Another thing would be reduced on-street parking. As you can tell, these vehicles that we're talking about, again, based off their length, take up much more parking than a regular passenger vehicle. Oftentimes, anywhere from two to three parking spaces by these larger vehicles. Some of them even more, right? And so this particular vehicle here takes up much more than, than the average. When, when our parking is already at a premium, our, our on-street parking is already at a premium, having these sort of vehicles parking and taking up that type of street parking makes it difficult for our community, both on our residents as well as our, you know, businesses and their patrons. And then lastly would be decreased drivable roadway space. Again, you can see it from this angle that some of these oversized vehicles, based off their width, actually decrease the amount of roadway space for people to drive down, creating again additional concerns. This vehicle also, based on the height and width of it, would also create other types of line of sight issues for, again, vehicles that might be pulling out into the, into the street in front of that vehicle. So those are the primary concerns that we're looking at. And, and the reality is this ordinance deals with also unattached trailers, which create many of the same sorts of problems that we see with the oversized vehicles. So again, here on the left-hand side, you can see the boat that's parked close to the curb, close to the intersection. It is over height. It would create a visibility issue for pedestrians that might be walking across that crosswalk that might get hit by a vehicle that can't see them until it's too late. And same thing on the right-hand side. You can see the reduced on-street parking as a result of the unattached trailer up there. So a lot of the concerns for both the unattached trailers impact, or have the same impact that we have with the concerns raised by the oversized vehicles as well. The city has a variety of options in addressing these sort of things. Anything from a complete ban. There are jurisdictions that do complete bans. There are some that just propose limited hours. Those limited hours might be limited daytime hours, such as you can only park on the streets for four hours or two hours. Some of them do complete elimination of overnight parking. Some of them do limited hours during overnight parking. So that overnight parking might be from, for example, 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM, or from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So they can limit it in that sort of way. They also, in some jurisdictions, will limit the areas. So they may say, okay, well, you can have your larger vehicles, but only in our industrial side of town, not in our residential, not in our commercial. So there's a variety of things that, that cities can do. Inclusive within these oversized vehicles, of course, includes recreational vehicles. And that's typically kind of the, the, the big thing that is of concern for most jurisdictions in the sense of not necessarily wanting to impose as many restrictions on the recreational vehicles, given our society's now kind of use of recreational vehicles all the time. So one of the things that cities can do in order to alleviate those restrictions is to provide parking permits for those recreational vehicles. And/or you can do it for all types of oversized vehicles. So these are the types of regulations that are generally looked at by most jurisdictions. What's actually being looked at by the different jurisdictions, and here we've got a list, a little updated list from the last time that we presented this, of other neighboring jurisdictions that have done a variety of regulations. And some of them, for example, if you look at Rancho Cucamonga, they actually prohibit all oversized vehicles or RVs from parking more than one hour between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. Now, there are abilities to get some type of permits for regular vehicles because that particular restriction applies to, to other types of vehicles as well. And they can get some type of permits, but not for the oversized vehicles. They provide no permits for the oversized vehicles there. City of Pomona, Fontana, Laverne, Ontario, Claremont, you can see other restrictions that they have. You'll also see that they vary with respect to what they deem to be oversized vehicles. So slightly different lengths or widths or heights. But again, they also provide, over on the right-hand column, what you're seeing is the permit-type programs that they offer. So they provide different types of permits, either in duration of how long that permit would last, or they'll provide different amounts of permits. Again, anywhere ranging from multiple permits on a monthly basis to just a set number of permits on an annual basis. And they, they vary anywhere from, you know, 48 hours to 72 hours, to some of them go for six, seven nights. So those are just some of the options. And those are what some of the neighboring jurisdictions. And we also have a, a list of other jurisdictions that are not necessarily neighboring, but are other large jurisdictions where some of them, again, have provided complete prohibitions, although allowing for some limited permitting for, typically for recreational vehicles specifically, as opposed to all oversized vehicles. Again, that being one of the concerns that most jurisdictions want to try and create some type of relief for. What's actually being proposed in the ordinance that's before you is, A, we define oversized vehicles to be those vehicles that are longer than 22 feet in length. They, or they're higher than eight feet in height, or they are wider than eight feet in width. And, and you'll see if we kind of just slide back to this screen here, you'll see that we're a little bit different than some of the others. That is, whereas some jurisdictions will start their oversized vehicles at 19 feet in length and/or even, even six feet or seven feet in height, what's being proposed here is eight feet in width, eight feet in height. Again, to try and allow for some of those vehicles, like Sprinter vans and things of those natures, which, which might otherwise qualify as an oversized vehicle in some of the other jurisdictions, to kind of exempt those sort of things. The code also does exempt pickup trucks that are defined by the California Vehicle Code. What it would include would be all RVs irrespective of the size of the recreational vehicle. Okay, so that's what's being proposed. Now, what specifically types of regulations or restrictions we're proposing, with respect to oversized vehicles, the proposal would be that they would be banned within the residential districts. These are oversized vehicles that would include recreational vehicles with some limitations. And that's why we say that there are some exceptions for this. We'll get into the permitting that would be allowed for the recreational vehicles. But otherwise, oversized vehicles would be banned completely within the residential districts with those limited exceptions that we'll go over. Within the non-residential districts, it would be more of a limitation of hours. So what's being proposed is that they would basically be prohibited during nighttime hours. That's 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Again, with limited exceptions. The unattached trailers, however, would be banned throughout the city with, again, limited exceptions. And we'll kind of go over what those limited exceptions are on the next screen. As can be seen here, the limited exceptions would include things like active loading and unloading. So again, whereas the oversized vehicles would be prohibited in residential areas, obviously, if they're doing active loading or unloading, you might have Amazon vehicles. You might have UPS. You might have other types of moving vans that are coming in in order to drop off. As long as they're doing active loading or unloading, they would be allowed within those areas. If they're doing a performance of some type of service, as long as they're on the same block. So you might have some types of construction vehicles or plumber vehicles or things of that nature that might qualify as oversized. And as long as they're actually performing a service at the time, then they can still park within that same block area. Government, public utility vehicles, school buses. Obviously, if a vehicle breaks down or if there's a medical emergency of the driver, they would be allowed to have it parked within that area, assuming that they're already there or that's where the breakdown occurred. But that would be limited to a 24-hour period. If they're engaged in an activity where they might have a permit from Public Works, they'd allow, be allowed to have that there. So for example, that's kind of similar to how Public Works may issue a right-of-way permit, an encroachment permit for roll-off bins, for construction vehicles, for shed, not sheds, but storage bins. For a limited period of time, they can get a Public Works permit. It would be the same thing here for some types of these vehicles. And then if they get an RV parking permit. And that's what we'll be talking about in a second. So all of those would be exceptions to the prohibitions with respect to hours and/or locations and/or times. The parking permit for the RVs that's being proposed is, A, these permits would only be issued to residents of the city. Now, there would be, they can be used by their guests, but the actual application would be done by the resident of the city. So if you have a guest that's coming over to visit you who has an RV, the resident who lives at that particular location would be able to apply for the permit. And then that permit would, they would just put in the information of the vehicle that's being used by their guest, and that would be, the permit would be issued for that. But again, it would be applied for by the resident. What's being proposed is that they would be allowed for a total of 12 permits per year. 10 of those would be short-term permits. The short-term permits are up to 72 hours. Basically, those would be used for kind of loading and unloading of the RVs. Whereas they would also be entitled to two longer-term permits, which are up to seven consecutive nights. So those are, again, if you have somebody who's visiting you, they can stay a little bit longer with those. We are still proposing and recommending a break in between permits of at least 24 hours. And that's again, to prevent someone from saying, okay, well, I want all 12 of my permits right now, and I'm gonna have them in a row and then keep that vehicle there for that entire period of time. So that, that kind of gives that break and, and allows us kind of a better flexibility with respect to ensuring the health and safety issues and the traffic concerns and the other things that we have. Looking at the exceptions, and so I said to you that the, the restrictions that the city's proposing are gonna have some of the exceptions that, that again, that we looked at here. One of the things to understand is that irrespective of whether a vehicle has a permit or it is exempted from the permit requirement. There are going to be some prohibited parking restrictions. And this is again focused on trying to preserve all of those concerns that we talked about earlier, line of sight, maneuverability on the roadway, parking spaces, things of that nature. So we are proposing a 50-foot distance from an intersection. You guys may be aware that recently the state of California passed AB 413. That now requires, which came into effect January 1st of this year, which requires all vehicles now to be parked at least 20 feet away from an intersection. That's a line of sight issue. So this is something that, as you know, we actually proposed this earlier, or two years ago, to create this line of sight and ensure that we have that line of sight at intersections. At the time, we were proposing 100-foot distance. We've decreased that now down to 50. But what's interesting is that the state has done the same thing with respect to all vehicles, including passenger vehicles now. And again, we're proposing the 50 feet because these oversized vehicles create a greater interference with that line of sight if there's only keeping that 20-foot distance. We're also proposing a five-foot distance from curb cuts of driveways. Again, this allows for greater visibility as people are pulling in and out of their private driveways, as well as for pedestrians who are walking down those sidewalks. They, they would not be able to park in any manner that otherwise substantially blocks traffic lanes or interferes with other critical lines of sight or anything that hinders visibility of a traffic control device, whether that's a stop sign or, or traffic light or anything of that nature. It is important to note that even after the council, once this is presented, if the council adopts this sort of an ordinance, none of these regulations would actually go into effect until we've put up the appropriate signage. So these are all things that obviously, aside from the actual adoption of the ordinance, we would be posting appropriate signage so that people who are coming into the city are, are familiar and aware of the particular regulations that are being proposed. There were some concerns, as I indicated, that were raised by the City Council two years ago. One of those things was there was a concern by a couple of council members who were concerned just about limiting any type of access to our public parking to members of our community. And so we did try and address that with this to some degrees, while still trying to balance the life safety issues that we're talking about with, especially with respect to visibility. And so this one here, again, this ordinance focuses on those oversized, those oversized vehicles, right? So we're talking again about those vehicles that exceed a certain height, width, or length. And again, the purpose of that is to ensure health and safety issues. The second thing is we're focusing on these vehicles also because, again, they, they take up an inordinate amount of on-street parking. And so while I understand council's concerns about trying to preserve people's rights to use the, the, the public streets, obviously, for every one of these large-size vehicles, that's two other or three other vehicles that may not be able to use that particular street because they're now being taken up by the oversized vehicles. So it's always a balancing act of trying to balance the needs of one versus the needs of everybody else. One of the other things that we did is that we have now allowed for these oversized vehicles. So whereas before, the original recommendation by staff two years ago was to do basically a blanket prohibition throughout the city with the exception of the exceptions that we talked about and/or the RV permits. But now what's being proposed is, within at least the non-residential areas, instead of doing a complete ban, but to do it based on limited hours. So within the non-residential areas, which would include the commercial and manufacturing and industrial, would be that they couldn't be parked there during the hours of 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM, thereby allowing them to actually be parked in those areas between the hours of 5:00 AM and 10:00 PM. So that's a change from what was originally being proposed to allow for greater access on those non-residential streets. The other thing that we did was we modified what the proposal was for the RV parking permit. So whereas before, the RV parking permits were all short-term permits, they were all 72 hours, now it's being proposed is for 10 short-term and then for two of the longer term to allow for the guests who may be coming over to visit. So that was, that, those are a couple of the changes that were done in order to kind of address that concern. One of the other concerns that was raised, and specifically what was kind of given as a, as an example, were landscape people who might come with their unattached trailers, and they may want to park their unattached trailer. And while they're doing their job during the day, additionally, they may want to leave it parked there overnight because it may be a multi-day job. And again, the, the, the issue with the unattached trailers, if, if the trailer's attached, it's not a problem. They can park there while they're doing their work, and that's not gonna be an issue unless they end up becoming an oversized vehicle based off the, the motor vehicle and the trailer attached to it. But what is being proposed is that, at the end of the day, the unattached trailers would still be banned unless they fall within the exceptions. And one of those exceptions is they can get a permit from Public Works to park there. So again, those permits are very similar to permits that would be issued for roll-off bins when someone's doing a construction job. They'll oftentimes get an encroachment permit, which would allow those bins to be parked on, to be stationed on a public right-of-way. Other types of construction vehicles will get things where they need to get a permit in order to do that. So what's being proposed is still a ban on those unattached trailers and, but, but with the ability for them to be able to get a permit. And again, if those trailers are attached to a motor vehicle, they would still be allowed to be parked there. This is just focusing on the oversized vehicles and unattached trailers. Another concern that was raised was the permitting process. And it was, what do we do if we have an unexpected guest who shows up? And City Hall might be closed. City Hall either, either late at night or over the weekend, and how do we get the permit? So one of the things that we're looking at doing is we're seeking vendors that can actually provide an online experience for getting the permits. This is something that we have in other jurisdictions where people can literally just go onto their phone. They can go onto their computer, and it's a 24/7 access. You can punch in all the appropriate information. And then what I'll do is one of two things, and this is part of what we're looking at with respect to the vendors, is you could either print out, so instead of having to come into City Hall and get a specialized permit that would be posted on your thing, it might have something like, for example, a QR code that you could just print out on your regular home computer and stick that in a dashboard. Alternative things that, that we've looked at in other jurisdictions, and, and, you know, they may be explored here, are things where it's just literally a sign based off the license plate, and you don't need to put anything on the vehicle, and then we can just run the license plates on those things. And it would be within the system that that license plate, that vehicle that has that license plate has been approved and has a permit. And all of that information would be readily available to the enforcement officers. But more importantly, it would allow for people within our community to be able to apply for those 24/7. And, and, you know, you know the benefit, like, we just talked about, obviously, the benefit of being able to get it 24/7 because that allows for those unexpected guests to be able to get it. But that also does some other things. One is it does allow for a reduction in the expenditure of staff resources because all of this is done online. So it allows for that stuff to be done, in essence, through a, a virtual module that people would be using online from their, from their smartphones or their computers. What that allows us to do also is to reduce the cost of the permits. We're not gonna, we don't necessarily need to print them out on specialized paper. They wouldn't have to have holograms. They wouldn't have to have all this stuff. And because staff is not being involved, it can keep the cost down of those permits, thereby making it better for the residents in our community. So again, those are just some of the things that we took into consideration with respect to the permitting program. Another issue, of course, was the, one of, it was raised that the ordinance would be eliminating the use of RVs for temporary residential aspects of it. And, and I just want to reiterate, as I indicated two years ago, that this ordinance is not proposing any changes with respect to the laws that we currently have. Our current laws prohibit the use of the RVs for habitable purposes. This would be maintaining that same restriction. You know, the, the RVs, if they're parked in an RV park, if they're at a location where it's approved, that's something that's okay. But, but the streets, and again, this is only applying to the public streets. This is not applying to private property. But we already have laws on our books within the, within the city that prohibit the use of those recreational vehicles, whether they're parked on the street or parked in private property, let's say in your driveway, for being used for those habitable purposes. So there's nothing that's being done in this ordinance that's changing that. We're not proposing allowing it as part of this ordinance, but we're also not prohibiting anything more that's already prohibited than, than that is already prohibited under our laws. So that one there, again, just, just to kind of reiterate what one of the concerns was that was raised. And that, that's a brief synopsis. Obviously, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have with respect to the ordinance or any of the restrictions.
Okay, great. Councilmember Ru, we'll start with questions.
Yes, to begin with, it is not uncommon in the world we live for, with all these delivery drivers, Amazon and FedEx and everything else. Many of them are independent contractors who own their own van. They live somewhere, get up in the morning or the evening, whenever it is, and deliver packages. How are we going to handle that?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
They may have a Mercedes Transit van, and they're an independent contractor, and they deliver for Amazon or FedEx or somebody like that. They may have to not have the space wherever they live to park this in a driveway. So where do they park the vehicle?
I mean, again, I, I understand council members' concern. And at the end of the day, everything is a balancing act, right? So I, I'm just saying is that everything's a balancing act, and I completely understand your concern. It's, it's the same thing of, I'm gonna say, okay, well, if I live on that same block and that oversized vehicle takes up three parking spaces in front of my house, where am I gonna park, right? And so I understand the concern that, that we want to make sure that everybody has the ability. But that's one of the problems when we live within a community.
This is somebody's business, though. This is how they make a living. We've created a society where people have deliveries 24 hours a day. Somebody has to do that. They can't do it from home. They can't be an employee on Zoom. So where would this person park the vehicle?
So if I may, I think, I think the answer here is that this is the corporate world tending to move their responsibilities onto local government and making local government responsible for providing parking for their vehicles and other conveniences so that they don't have to burden themselves with it. And so in that regard, I think it's already on the books that you cannot take these kind of vehicles and park them on city streets overnight. If you're up, if you're, if that vehicle is your business and you're bringing that vehicle to your home, city codes already prohibit that activity from occurring. So as, as already indicated, this ordinance isn't expanding those sorts of things. It's only addressing the matter from a different perspective.
So you're, you just said they can't bring their business home, correct?
They can't bring their vehicles. That, the corporation needs to provide parking for those vehicles.
So I'm an Allstate insurance agent. I bring my vehicle home every night. Allstate is supposed to find a place for me to park it?
If you're talking about a car, that's a different story. We're talking about people who are bringing their delivery vehicles home because Amazon doesn't want to provide them parking. They want to make it a city responsibility. Yes, we are saying that those vehicles cannot be.
But I'm an independent contractor. This is how I make my living. I have to park my vehicle somewhere. These are residents here in this city, many of whom are struggling to get by. Now we're going to tell them they have to park the vehicle somewhere else?
Councilmember Reichen, I can make the same exact argument about my personal vehicle, which is the vehicle that I use to get to court every single day. If I don't have a space to park it because my driveway has too many cars in it because of my family, I need to park it on the street. I can't do that because somebody brought in a 40-foot-long truck that they want to park in front of my house because that's where they can find parking. And now I no longer have a parking spot. My wife no longer has a parking spot. My kid no longer has a parking spot. So I, I, again, I completely understand what you're indicating, but it's really a balancing act. And for every larger vehicle that we allow to be parked on the street because someone has a house where they can't park that vehicle or because they purchased a vehicle that they know can't fit within the driveway of what they have, there are two or three other people that are being impacted.
And I just look at somebody trying to make a living.
And I'm just trying to make a living too. I mean, it's, it's no different. We're all trying to make a living.
But keeping that even further would be that I live in a neighborhood, but I tend to park my car three places down because that's convenient for me. I don't own that street. No one owns that street. It's owned by the public. So I, I'm, I'm really hesitant on anything's gonna hurt somebody's business.
And, and we want all of the public's.
These large Mercedes Transit and Sprinter vans are a fact of life for many people.
The Sprinter vans wouldn't fall within this category. That was part of the reason why the height, width, and size of the vehicles.
That's what I'm asking. I said, somebody who may have a Mercedes Sprinter or Transit van.
Right, and, and Sprinter vans should not fall within it. They should fall below the height and the width and the length. So those types of vehicles should be exempt based on their size. That was part of the reason why we chose a taller height limit than what some of the other jurisdictions did. So whereas other jurisdictions did six or seven feet tall, we did eight feet tall. So that should cover those Sprinter vans. That was one of the very specific reasons we looked at that issue was because of the Sprinter vans. Now, if what you're talking about are box trucks or, or larger delivery trucks, those are absolutely the types of vehicles that would be impacted by this type of an ordinance, and purposely so. Because those are the types of vehicles that create a greater problem on our community with respect to, again, parking, with respect to line of sight issues, with respect to all of the sort of concerns that, that I was talking about earlier. But the Sprinter vans should be fine based on their height, width, and length.
And I can't do anything about what corporate America does or doesn't do. They're going to continue to do it. We, as a small city, can't stop it, and we're, we shouldn't be impeding somebody's ability to make a living. But having said that, we're talking about long-term stays. It is not uncommon for somebody maybe to bring an RV, stay with the family for three months during the summer, maybe grandparents staying with their children. They may not have a place to park it, but on the street. They may move it every couple of days because they go around, drive, do some sightseeing, and come back. How would we handle that?
If they, I, I'm sorry, if, so they may. If they, I'm sorry, if, so they may come here and then drive away for a couple days and then come back?
Or a day, maybe a date. I am, let's say, visiting grandchildren here in Montclair. I'm here for three months. I come in an RV. I park in front of their house. Maybe I'll leave in the morning and come back in the afternoon, because I'm doing grocery shopping or something. How will we handle that?
And again, the ordinance is not going, there is no ordinance in the world that you can do that's going to protect the health and safety issues that we're trying to address and make everybody else happy. So this ordinance is probably not designed for someone who's gonna come and stay for three months. They'll be able to get the permits that are allowed, which is 12 permits, two long-term, 10 short-term. They have to have a break in between, and if someone wants to use all 12 of their permits at that time, well, someone goes away for a day and comes back, they could do that. But, you know, that, again, that, and I understand, I don't know how often that happens, that people are coming-
Neither do I. I don't know how often this is a problem, period. But I'm asking real-world questions.
Well, I understand you're asking real-world, I'm providing real-world examples and answers, which is, at the end of the day, we're not going to create an ordinance that's going to make everybody happy, because I could create another real world one and go, hey, I want to come and stay for six months. How do I do that? You're not going to be able to. You're not going to be able, under this ordinance, to park a recreational vehicle on the city street in front of this home for three months or six months. It's not designed to do that. That person is not going to have any luck to be able to do that here. They're gonna have to find alternative locations to park that vehicle. It may be on the property if they can fit it. If not, they're gonna have to consider that. And everybody who buys property has issues. There are a lot of things that I wish I could do with my property, I can't. There are a lot of things I wish I could park on the public street, I can't. Why? Because society is trying to balance the other concerns that we have. So I understand your real-world example, and I'm telling you, that person would not be able to park the car there for three months.
Well, I would feel sorry for our residents, many of whom do have those situations. Do we have an idea what these permits would cost?
We won't know that until we figure out what the actual system is going to be. That is, whether or not it's going, we're gonna be able to get that online system going. But the nice thing about permits is permits have to be reasonably related to the cost of processing it. So the easier we can make the processing of the permit, the lower the cost can be. I can tell you that in other jurisdictions, these permits run anywhere from $7 up to $40 or $50, depending on the duration of that permit. So they can be very low, they can be a little bit more expensive, and it really depends on the processing of it. That is, if I have to come into City Hall and I have staff having to work this thing, and we have to print permits out on a specialized paper, that increases the cost. By looking for vendors that can do things online, and even allow it either by you just printing something out on your own paper at home with a QR code, that law enforcement can come by and just scan and make sure that you're parked in the right location, that decreases that cost. So I don't know what it would be right now. That would be something that would ultimately come back to the council with purpose of a fee resolution to approve, but we won't know that until we have a vendor that can actually respond to the concerns that we have, and hopefully do a program that would be acceptable to us.
And as we all know, technology fails.
It does.
Quite frequently. What do we do for the person that wants to do this online, or now has to do it online with no option, and the technology fails?
Well, generally, the places that have it available online do have a fallback option. Somebody could still go into City Hall, or someone could still do something else. You know, if technology fails, and, so the violations of this code are a parking ticket, right? So this is not a criminal offense or anything of that nature, it's a parking ticket. They would have a right to appeal the parking ticket, they can challenge it. So there will be due process for people who feel that they were unfairly given a ticket that because there may have, and it's really no different than, I go to a parking meter and I try to put money in, but for whatever reason, the meter's not working, I make a choice. I either park there and run the risk, and then fight it if I get a ticket for it, or I go move my car somewhere else. The hope here is that we don't have those issues, we're looking for vendors that are tried and true, but I agree with you, technology fails.
I think the hope here is that they move their car somewhere else, period.
Not my hope, but-
I'm sorry, that's just how I feel.
I understand that, that's not my hope. I want to be clear, that's not my hope.
I have strong feelings on a working-class community doing this. Many of whom have multiple family members that have to work for a living. I think we need to make sure that the cost on this is such that it's not going to burden our families, many of whom are already overburdened. I think before we go into anything, I hope my colleagues who would think of our working-class families who do struggle every day, and yes, I understand the issue about somebody not being able to see around a car or something like that, yet at the same time, I mention all the time here about families who open their doors on the street side and let their children out, and I'm told that I'm being cruel. So, anyway.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't get your name at the beginning, sir.
Jim.
Thank you. First question to staff, and as to a question of procedure. This workshop is merely a workshop. We're not being asked to approve the ordinance tonight, are we?
No.
That is correct.
Perfect. Because I was gonna say, I just obviously received it at 4:56 today.
Right.
Which was about an hour and 40 minutes ago. And I haven't even had the full chance to go through the 14 or so pages, 13 pages of it, because there's some issues in here that I have some problems with. I will start by saying, I appreciate, Jim, you and your staff at least, looking at the comments and the questions that were raised two years ago. I vaguely remember them. When this was brought up two weeks ago to set this meeting, I inquired about when, what brought this forth. Staff reminded me that we discussed this at a prior meeting. I wasn't sure how long ago, then I was trying to remember my comments. And some of my comments came to bear through your presentation and seeing some of the material. I have a question, and this is to staff. In Jim's performance, presentation, sorry, you stated that, and I just wrote down my words, and it could have been yours, "ongoing acts of service." So while they're performing an ongoing act of service, and you mentioned plumbers, landscapers, construction, they may park their vehicles on the street while they're in the act of providing the service. Now, to staff, the questions that I have are these. How are cadets or police officers going to decipher and determine if they are indeed in the act of providing a service? Who will make that call? And will the cadet or the officer be reporting to that property, knocking on the door first, to inquire if that is their service vehicle or unattached trailer out front before they're even cited? That's my first question.
I was smiling at that, because that was actually exactly one of your questions two years ago as well.
At least I'm consistent.
You are consistent, right. And I'll tell you, it's an enforcement issue like anything else, right? So this is not something where someone's just gonna go up and issue a citation, because there are exceptions, right? So staff's gonna have to verify that the vehicle doesn't fall within one of those exceptions. Obviously, I can't tell you exactly how the enforcement's going to play out, because every situation is slightly different. But yeah, I mean, it could entail someone going in and knocking on a door to see if they're conducting work. It could be that they drive by, and they'll drive back by about a half hour later, 45 minutes later, an hour later, to see if the vehicle is still there or if it's moved on. So there's definitely gonna be a requirement for any of the enforcement officials to conduct their investigation, and it's not just gonna be a question of, you know, I drive by, see a vehicle, and boom, I pop a ticket on its windshield. Because there are these exceptions where someone could lawfully park in that location, it's not like the parking in and of itself, by itself, is illegal without conducting the remainder of that investigation. So they would be directed to conduct an investigation to make sure that it doesn't fall within that, one of those exceptions.
And both chief and city manager, you attest to that being accurate and true?
Well, yes, but I also think that the general rule would be that during the daylight hours, if you see a vehicle that appears like it's a utility vehicle that would be providing some level of work, whether it be construction-related work, landscaping work, that the general practice would be to leave the vehicle alone, not even engage necessarily in any kind of investigation. And it would be the evening hours, if that vehicle is still there. That would probably engender some interest on the part of a police officer to undertake an investigation at that point in time. So the target here mostly is whether or not there are RVs or other larger vehicles that are remaining on the street overnight. Obviously, this targets during the day as well, and police officers will have to be cognizant of that. But when it comes to the types of work vehicles that you are discussing, the general rule would probably be, from the chief of police, to observe those vehicles. If there is reason to question it, then you would question it, but on a general basis, leave that vehicle alone unless you observe that it continues to remain there.
In that instance, let's take the plumbing issue. Did I mention that two years ago as well?
You did.
Okay, the plumbing issue. You know, plumbing happens at all hours of the night. I mean, a pipe could break at 12:00 midnight, and there you need Roto-Rooter to come, or I don't want to make a plug for them. Any other company's welcome. I'll take royalties. It's not during the daytime hours, they would be parked in the nighttime hours, they're trying to fix the neighbor's broken whatever. And I find it really cumbersome on our police officers to ask them to knock and investigate when indeed the resident has legitimate need to have the vehicle there on the street to service a broken water main or a pipe or, you know, flooded toilet.
I think there's two things. One is, there's probably gonna be some indicia that work is going on. That is, you might see lights on. So if I'm showing up at 3:00 in the morning and there's a, you know, a plumbing van that's parked outside, but every single light in the entire house of every house along all of those blocks are turned off, it's unlikely that that person is actually doing some type of repair. It's not impossible, but it might be unlikely. So there might be some indicia that they're gonna be looking for. Again, remember that if a person gets a ticket, and they believe that they've unfairly gotten that ticket, they will have the ability to challenge that ticket. It is a parking ticket, they have the right to challenge that ticket, and would be able to show, hey, I was conducting an emergency repair at that location, and here's my proof of it, and that ticket could be dismissed. So there, and this is all, you know, again, parking ticket related, we're not talking about going to court on anything. So I mean, again, I do think that in that sort of an instance, especially during the nighttime hours, there might be some other indicia of somebody performing some type of emergency repairs, because I agree, that would happen. But on the other hand, if law enforcement drives by seven nights during that week, and that vehicle is parked there for seven nights, it's also unlikely that they were conducting an emergency repair for seven nights in a row. Not impossible, but unlikely.
Well, you lead me to my next question, or one of the questions I was gonna ask, and it kind of relates to that. I know of a gentleman, a resident, who has a box car, perhaps something similar to what is in your picture of the vehicle that's blocking the stop sign. Who runs his own business and has his own work van, has his tools in there, has, I believe he does, if I'm correct, he does surveillance camera installation and kind of like a Wi-Fi-related service for security, for homes, businesses, and commercial units. Unfortunately, he's been broken into many times, and of course, he absorbs that cost and utilizes his insurance. But that's his only means of vehicle, of a work van, to operate his business. And he does park it on a very busy street right now in the city. Residents across from him allow him to park on their side on street sweeper days, and we're fine with it. And we know that we can park across that way when we have to move our cars for street sweeping. There has been no complaints with respect to that individual, because he doesn't cause any problems on the street. We know he has a big vehicle. It's just understood, and residents get along. Now, I know not every single street's that way. There's no harmony consistent in every single street. But that person is entitled, at least, it's his business. He's now gonna be asked to park somewhere else, because I believe it would meet the description of this car in the picture that I'm looking at. And it leads me to ask, I'm gonna find the page, because it's my subsequent question, I marked it on the page. You state that oversized vehicles may be parked in non-residential districts between 5:00 AM and 10:00 PM.
Correct.
Okay, well, he comes home at night. Where do you anticipate him parking that vehicle? It's not a company like an Amazon or a corporate entity that would have a parking lot for him to park. This is, he's it. And this is gonna adversely affect him and his income, at least, because now he's gonna have to move that vehicle. Now, it reminds me of one of my, I think, my first year on this council. It was during COVID, because we were still doing Zoom. We banned parking on Palo Verde Avenue for large vehicles, and we had another individual who it was his livelihood, and he was parking his vehicle on the street. I think it might have been a diesel, dump truck, okay, dump truck. Nonetheless, he was parking it, and I believe he had a relative drive him to his residence in the city. Correct? Something like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Lived nearby.
So we, and I voted for that prohibition. We banned that. And I still haven't forgotten about the man. I wonder how he's doing business-wise. I hope he still lives in the city, I hope he didn't move out. I hope his business is thriving, but I know we force him to incur an expense to park the vehicle now. Hopefully, he could use it as a write-off. But nonetheless, that was a burden. For these individuals that are sole proprietors, they own their own business, they own their own apparatus, this ordinance still affects them. And even if it's two to five, I think that's way too many. And who are we to do that? I get the limitations on parking the RVs, the unattached vehicles, or the unattached trailers, the diesels that I have seen on some streets predominantly down south, maybe in the mayor's area. But, and then I'm gonna get to the 20 versus 30-feet rule, that's my next question. I'm still uneasy with that, because it doesn't accommodate them. And they will exhaust their permits quickly, and then what?
Well, the box truck would not be eligible for a permit. Permits are only for recreational vehicles.
Well, I'm assuming it's a box truck. You guys can go out there with your measuring tape, which is another thing. Are you gonna really expect code enforcement and our staff to go out there with measuring tape and measure every single vehicle? I mean-
I will tell councilmember that, you know, this, a lot of this generates from complaints that we get from residents about these issues.
I've only had one in five years.
And I can tell you that this is also a proactive, and this was one of the things that you actually asked about, again, two years ago, was kind of how did this generate? You brought up the Palo Verde location at the time as well. And you were advised by the city manager that this was a proactive issue, with staff going around seeing an issue. You know, when we look at these things, and we look at the oversized vehicles, and we can all come up with, hey, here's, and I don't want to belittle it, so I'm not saying this in a derogatory manner, but we can all come up with sad stories where someone is being impacted by some government regulation. I mean, unfortunately, that's what government does. I mean, yes, I agree that the public streets are there for the public, but we don't have unfettered access to do whatever we want on public streets. And when we start doing things on public streets that impact other people, that's typically when government steps in and says, hey, we need to balance things out. This ordinance is focused on life safety issues when we're dealing with pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, based on oversized vehicles. Residential zones historically were not designed for overweight vehicles, nor were they designed for oversized vehicles. And as councilmember Rue may, you know, kind of think here, is that obviously our society is changing, and we're moving on to different types of vehicles, and maybe some of these vehicles are necessary for the jobs that you have. But there's a lot of people who have commercial businesses. I mean, a perfect example are auto repair businesses, where cities will have laws and say, hey, all your business needs to be conducted indoors. But I got really busy, and so now I need to start parking some of these vehicles outdoors, and city's still gonna come in and say, yeah, but that's in violation of our law, because our law says it has to be done indoors. But I'm just trying to make a living, so I need to expand. At some point, the places that we buy, the things that we do, don't always fit with the laws that exist in these areas. And when we're trying to create laws that protect health and safety issues, I would differ than you. And obviously, I'm not the person who's voting on this, but at the end of the day, I would differ from you. If there's a potential life safety issue because of an oversized vehicle, I'm gonna be concerned about that. That's gonna be my concern. I understand that some workers may have to find a different location to park their vehicle. We have home occupation permit laws. Those regulate the types of vehicles that you can have parked at your place. They regulate lots of different aspects when you are conducting a business at your home. It is primarily a residence. If, if, if I run a tow truck company, is it okay if I come and park my tow truck at the property? Typically, no. It's not the type of thing that we allow to be parked in a residential area. So the laws that we're looking at are trying to, A, ensure that we're still maintaining a residential area, but primarily, these things are focusing on our life safety issue. And, and when we come back to, you know, kind of the sad story that you're talking about of, well, this person, where's he going to park his vehicle? Where's he going to park his vehicle? You're also saying, okay, well, is it okay for this one person to park his vehicle there when two or three other people may not be able to park their vehicle? And then where am I going to go park? Should I have to go park my vehicle three blocks down, because that's the closest place I can find, because there's a big rig or an unattached trailer, or a box, a, a box truck, or some other type, large oversized vehicle, that's taking up multiple space on a street that has limited parking? I mean, at some point, we're going to create a law that's going to be deemed or viewed as unfair to one, but fair to one or two or three or five or 50 others. And, and, and I mean, and that's why you guys are sitting in the seat that you're sitting in, is to kind of do that balancing act and figure out which issues are more important to you. For me, as I indicated, I'm always going to side on life safety issues. So when I have big vehicles that are obstructing line of sight, they're obstructing driveway accessibility, people who are either walking down a sidewalk who may not be able to see the oncoming traffic that's coming, because there's a big rig that's parked there. I mean, even the state, and I know that you said you wanted to get back to this, but even the state has now seen with regular passenger vehicles, line of sight near an intersection is an important issue. And so now we have a law that all passenger vehicles have to be at least 20 feet away from an intersection. Is that fair? We're now limiting even more of that on-street parking by taking away 20 feet of potential parking space. Well, the answer is the state said, yes, it is fair, because life safety has to be paramount. When we're talking now about big box trucks, wider vehicles, longer vehicles, taller vehicles that create more of an obstruction, that's the reason I'm just going to kind of jump, and I know you still have a question regarding it. But that's the reason why we believe 20 feet is not enough for those vehicles, that for those type vehicles, we need a, a larger distance, because we may have vehicles that are traveling on certain roads at a quicker rate of speed, therefore, they have a, they a slower reaction time. And having those large vehicles impacts that. So, I mean, again, all of these things are set. I understand that you can all come up with examples where this may be unfair to one or two people, or five or 10 people, and I could come up with 100 examples of where it's more fair to a lot of other people. But at the end of the day, I understand the concerns. We've done our best to try and address the concerns while balancing the life safety issues.
Well, we also need to take note of the fact that the vehicle that you described is in fact in conflict with the provisions related to our truck routes. So the truck routes provide that a vehicle over 10,000 pounds are not permitted on those streets in the city that are not designated as truck routes. Vehicles are offered an exemption, for example, delivery, and a boxcar truck would be a delivery truck. But it should only be going into these residential streets for the purposes of making delivery. It should not be going into the residential streets for the purposes of parking there on an indefinite basis, because the owner of the vehicle lives there. So that alone creates a conflict with another ordinance that we have in place regulating vehicles regarding what can go off of the designated truck routes.
Reclaiming my time, look, I, I take great umbrage with your comment about us issuing sad stories and instances that we're listing, because these sad stories are reality for many of my residents who run small businesses and are sole proprietors. So for them, it is a hardship. And I... No, 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 I'm, no, no.
You know, I, I apologize.
So please don't inject your opinion on this.
It's 6:39.
I am representing my residents.
It's 6:39 now, so I'm going to ask, I think council...
No, I have two more, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it's, it's 6:39. We're not going to take any action. I'm going to ask that we put this on a future council meeting for discussion. I'm going to allow council member...
Discussion or action? I'll, I'll, I'm in favor of discussion.
Let's do this. I want to ask Councilman Mendez, I know he's got questions, I'm not sure, we're, we're running out of time here, so I'm going to ask Councilman Mendez, if he's got any questions you want to bring up.
Well, I don't want to take up too much time. Some of the best relate. So, regarding the property, these trailers or campers, if they're parked out there and, when, when would they be impounded? Would that be something that's right away, or it's just ticketed, and then they have a week to get it off or, or move it? If it's not registered, do we tow it immediately?
No, these vehicles are not towed immediately. The, the initial issue would be, you know, a ticket. But there are provisions already within the vehicle code to impound vehicles that are improperly parked, that are illegally parked on the street. But it's not something that occurs immediately. I can't tell you exactly when it would be done, but it's not something that would be done immediately. That's not how the process works.
And then if they do get a permit to park, do they have to park in front of their address? And then if so, if they live on a corner, they wouldn't be able to park in front of their address, so would they be able to park at the neighbor's house?
Yeah, so the way the code sets it out is they would have to park within the same block, but they, if they cannot park within the same block, then they can't apply for an alternate location. So the staff does have the ability to prove an alternate location where, you know, they can't park it in that particular location. But it would allow it for anywhere within the same block.
Just, I, I researched real quick while you guys were all talking about the Sprinter van. I mean, you put eight foot as the max. I researched, and it says that Sprinter vans are between eight and 10 feet tall, so we'd need to probably bump that up if we're trying to allow for Sprinter vans. Tickets being issued, I, I know, like, 10 o'clock, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Again, I think this kind of question was brought up, but like, normally, we would have cadets out doing parking tickets and violations, street sweeping, other things like that. This would be now put onto the police officers, because they're the ones that are out working, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Chief, was, is, do they have time to do that? Is there enough time? I mean, I feel like they don't have the time to issue tickets for, for something like this. Okay. And then I know, will there be a, a warning period, you know, if this is implemented? And then if so, even after the warning period is over, do they get to issue the warning the first time, like the first night, for each registered vehicle or house? They, they do?
Great questions. And, and those are things that can be implemented once the ordinance is being brought back as an actual ordinance. So it could be done in the same way that the state did with respect to, for example, the 20-foot distance from the curbs, that for the first X number of months, it was just warnings. No tickets were issued until January 1st of this year. So we could do something like that. We could delay the implementation of this for a period of time. That would all be stuff that would be proposed at the time that the ordinance is coming in, of either delaying the effective date of the ordinance beyond the normal 30-day period, and putting it out for, let's say, four months, or five months, or six months, or whatever. Or as a matter of practice, we could do it in the same way by saying, hey, for the next X number of times, all that's going to happen is you're going to be given a notice. And instead of a ticket, a notice would potentially be placed on the windshield so that people are, are made aware of the law. So that's absolutely something we've discussed and could be implemented, but until we kind of get a little bit further down the line, I, I wouldn't propose a specific thing.
Okay, and then you were talking about, you know, going online. I actually have a friend that I go over to their house sometimes, and if I stay the night, we just go online and we print it right there on his printer. I go out, put it in my dash, and it's good. And then even, I found out that the police get that list too, so if they just have to be out, they already know, oh, that car's okay, or whatever. So that, that seems to work. And I know we can't make everybody happy, you never can make everyone happy. But I've always, I've always admired how Claremont doesn't allow cars at all to park. And I know, you know, it's maybe not the best thing to, for some people, but I grew up on Evar Street, and that street was packed with cars. I could never park in front of my own house. And it gets very frustrating when it happens to you. And so I, I am a, you know, I, I'm in favor of this type of regulation, to be honest. But I do agree with both of them on Ben and Bill about, you know, other people and their jobs. I, I do have sympathy for that, and I, I hope we can figure something out to make it work, but that's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, I'll be quick. So I, I do see that you spent a lot of time going over our comments at the last meeting and making some changes, and I really appreciate that. At the last workshop, I had mentioned that my, I think I had mentioned it, that my concern was more focused on the disproportionate impact of our residents that are experiencing homelessness. And you mentioned that, that that's more of a state issue, and I totally understand that that's something that, you know, we, we can't change here in the city of Montclair, at least not overnight. But I, this is more so a, a comment for our city manager than a question for you, but I see that there are some cities that have brainstormed ideas for how to minimize that impact. For instance, I believe it's Santa Cruz that had a safe parking program for overnight parking, and the city of Los Angeles also had some agreement with the transportation authority to, I believe specifically for residents that were experiencing homelessness, living in their RVs who have then received help, not wanting to part ways with their RVs, so they would park them in Caltrans-owned area. And I'm sure that that has been looked into, but I just want to state that for the record, that I, I hope that if that is something that could be practical for our city, that that's something we would consider. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I will say this, I have gotten complaints by residents, especially RVs being parked. I know we have one RV that is same location, been 72-hour tag, moved someplace else, came back to same location, it's been a yo-yo. You know, Mike's, you know, Mike's, what I'm talking about. So this order is not really about sending our police officers or cadets throughout the city and taking people. This is really to address nuisances that we're receiving from the public, to address that. So this will give us more teeth. So what I'd like to do this evening is continue the discussion, perhaps with, not, with the exception of a workshop, maybe we just put it on the council agenda under a council inquiry and continue to, and continue the discussion. I think there was some questions or comments made. I know there was a question about cost raised. I think cost should be very minimal. I think there was a discussion about the warning period raised by Councilman Mendez. I think that we should have some type of period of time where we just give out warnings. There was a discussion about the, the potential of someone who has a, a vehicle, a working vehicle. Maybe we need to discuss that a little further and see if we can have an exception there as well, if there's some type of permit for those folks. And so I'll be open to those ideas. What I'd like to do is if the council's okay, we direct staff to place this, one of our meetings this summer, and we'll place under a council inquiry and continue the discussion. Perhaps those three areas I brought up, council or staff can bring back additional information. Any further comments? Councilman Lopez.
For staff to look into this issue, this was going to be my question. I understand the new rule, new law in, in effect with AB 4, 413 regarding the 20-foot buffer at intersections. But I know that you guys are proposing a 50-foot buffer at our intersections, which I think is excessive. Would you please look into how that would impact the residents at San Bernardino and Montevista, Orchard and Central, Orchard, Montevista, Howard and Central, Kingsley and Montevista? Because those are intersections that are close to residential homes. Many of those homes are on the corner, and they would no doubt be affected.
Councilmember, can you give me those locations again? Please?
San Bernardino and Montevista. Orchard and Central. Orchard and Montevista. Howard and Central. Kingsley and Montevista. And that's not, those aren't just the, my, my limits. I mean, we obviously have Benito and, and Montevista that would be affected big time. We have city properties on the corner of Orchard and Central, that we, we own a house right there on the corner. All those homes on those intersections would no doubt be affected by this, and I'd like for that to look at how that 50-foot buffer would no doubt affect them. I know the state law already mandates 20, so we can't control that, that state law, but we're now going above that. And just on a side note, also, I, I know we've discussed this, but part of the problem we have in this city with respect to impacted parking is the addition of ADUs in the city and single-family dwellings being split and added on to, which bring in more people and more cars. And we can't mandate that they put a slab of cement or parking on their property, which I think is baloney. We should be able to, to get them off the street, to provide them a space. But now we got residents fighting on the street. That needs to be looked into.
Okay, so council concur that we just place this on a future city council item as a, as an inquiry for further discussion.
Yes.
Okay, so ordered. Do we have any public comments for this evening? Members of the public wish to address the, the council this time regarding this item? And if not, we're adjourned. Thank you.